So I just want to check, councillor Ferguson, can you hear us okay? So I just want to check to make sure that we can hear you. So hang on a moment. Want to try again?
Yep.
Yep, great, we can hear you. Thanks for that. Just wait for a few more members of the gallery to come in. Councillors, we're about to commence. Could you start the live stream, please? Thank you. Welcome to this evening's... Mr Prigg, you can leave the council meeting, thank you. Mr Prigg. Just allow some of the other members of the gallery to join us. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Latrobe City Council's monthly council meeting, which is being held in the Gibson Performing Arts Centre for those who are joining us online. Tonight's meeting is held with some of our councillors here in the room. We also have councillor Ferguson with us online. We don't have any public speakers this evening, so we would normally have some speakers attending virtually as well, but we do not. Ferguson, councillor Sharon Gibson, councillor Dal Harriman, councillor Brad Law, councillor Tracy Lund, councillor Graham Middlemiss and councillor Darren Howe. It's good to have you all with us this evening. I'd also like to welcome our CEO, Steve Piercenti, who is joining us and obviously members of our general management team are here and our tech crew are ensuring that we have available this meeting via live stream for those who are joining us virtually or watching it back at another point in time. I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today on the traditional lands of the Brakalong people of the Gunno-Kurno nation and I pay my respects to the elders past, present and those emerging. If there are elders who are joining us this evening, I would also like to acknowledge you. As we move on to some of the housekeeping matters this evening, just a reminder to anyone who's joining us this evening that we do conduct these meetings under set governance rules. We welcome all members of the public attending tonight's council meeting. It'd be appreciated if everyone in attendance could ensure both councillors and those joining us that we extend the level of courtesy and respect to those speaking here tonight to the councillors. Just the friendly reminder, if you can speak directly into the microphones, it'll just make it a little bit easier for those who are joining us online or watching it back later to be able to hear you as well. We don't have any apologies. I'm not aware of any leave of absence requests, councillors, unless something's happening in the least last little while. Okay, so next on the agenda is item three. This is the adoption of the minutes commencing on page four, tonight's agenda. I've got a councillor with a motion, someone who was in attendance at the last meeting, councillor Law is moving. Second, a councillor Lund. There's no opposition to those councillors, no adjustments required. We'll consider those carried. Thank you so much, councillors. Item four on the agenda is declaration of interest, councillors. Does anyone have any declarations of interest? Councillor Harriman was first hand up.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Item 8.1, community grants, point four, have an indirect conflict of interest.
Thank you so much, councillor Harriman. Councillor Lund.
Sorry, also 8.1, indirect, but I haven't got the actual point in front of me, sorry.
Thank you. We'll note those and the officers have the paperwork so they can record that in the fuller detail, yeah?
Possibly 8.2, point 22. Indirect again.
Thank you, councillor Lund. Councillors, any further declarations? No? Okay, we're free to move through. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation. This is where we hear from members of the community. This is an opportunity for members of the public to lodge a question to be answered at the council meeting to clarify issues of public interest. Eligible questions received in writing by 12 noon on the Friday prior to the council meeting will be responded to by the CEO. For tonight's council meeting, we've received three questions from the public. Two of them relate to the same issue. Two of these questions are in regard to the removal of the Lord's Prayer. One question is in regard to the proposed development of land at 23 Dunbar Road to Relgan. I now ask the CEO to read out the questions and provide a response to each of the matters raised. Thank you, Mr Piercenti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you mentioned, there are two questions. First related to the removal of the Lord's Prayer and this was from the Relgan Community Development Association and Mr Noel Blundell. The question was, two separate questions have been received regarding the decision to remove the Lord's Prayer at the commencement of council meetings. Firstly, the reasoning behind the decision to remove the Lord's Prayer and secondly, when it was, when will it be reinstated in the future? So in response to that, the use of the Lord's Prayer at the commencement of council meetings at Latrobe City has recently been reviewed and it's been subject, this matter, to broad discussion across many councils in Australia. So in response, council undertook research into the use of the Lord's Prayer or otherwise as part of council meeting practices in Victoria and found that less than one-third of local governments in Victoria use a prayer interpreted to be based on Christian faith. And Latrobe City was in fact the only council in Victoria to use the Lord's Prayer. The research also included benchmarking that indicated that the councils are moving away from a traditional prayer to either an affirmation statement, which represents how councillors intend to work in the best interest of the community or a statement of inclusion and recognition of the diversity of beliefs and identities within their respective communities. And therefore, at this point, the council meeting agenda no longer includes a section for the prayer and this change was enabled by the legislative requirements as to how council meetings are managed and set. And the second question...
Mr CEO, I believe councillor Gibson had a question that relates to that matter. If we could attend to that before we move on to the second. Thank you, councillor Gibson.
Thank you. My question is, okay, it says that some, not everyone does it and they're going away from it. But is there anything to stop us?
Not in terms of an affirmation as such and so, as I said, a number of councils have moved to that where they do include some, some of those councils do include some faith-based arrangements. So that is something that council could consider in the future. But in terms of the Lord's Prayer specifically, that's the one that's obviously been removed from the council meeting at this point.
Sorry. So, okay, others do differently, but is there anything that would, if the community decided they wanted, is there anything that would stop us?
In terms of the Lord's Prayer specifically, I believe there is. There's been some information provided to council separately in relation to that regarding the legal basis upon which we can or can't include a prayer. And so the Lord's Prayer at this point hasn't been included in the agenda on that basis. But there are opportunities for council to consider an affirmation that could have some connection to faith base, which is what some other councils have done, a more general type of statement.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Mr Piercenti?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Second question is from Emma Matrowski, hope I've pronounced that correctly, on behalf of the Southsides Residence Group, which relates to the proposed development of 23 Dunbar Road to Relgan. And the question is, will Latrobe City take into consideration in its assessment of the planning application for the proposed high-density housing development at 23 Dunbar Road to Relgan that there is an agreement in place between the developer and state government that will result in the proposed development being used for social housing? So in response to that, it is acknowledged that there is a caveat on the property title advising that the director of housing has a purchaser's contract with the registered proprietor of the land. Latrobe City has to assess the application as currently proposed for the development of the land with 52 dwellings on a lot, 52 lot subdivision of land and the creation and removal of an easement at 23 Dunbar Road to Relgan. Nowhere in the application documentation is there mention of the tenure of the proposed housing. And under the Planning and Environment Act 1987, planning permit assessments cannot factor into the tenure of a dwelling as part of the decision-making on an application. In other words, Latrobe City does not have the legislated ability to assess the tenure of the proposed dwellings. That's the extent of the questions. Madam Mayor?
Question, councillor Gibson? Sorry.
My question is, if they actually had have said in their documentation that it was for public housing, would it be assessed differently?
I might need to defer to my general manager of assets and planning, but my understanding is that it would make, would not make a difference because it's not considering the, the use, the tenure of the proposed dwellings. But Jody might be able to correct me if I'm wrong or add to that.
True human, a mayor.
Yeah, sorry.
An application has to be assessed in terms of what's been applied for. So the proposal is 55 dwellings. So that's what we have to say. So, I mean, an application can include anything, but it's 55 dwellings. So that's what we have to say so we can consider the tenure as part of any future occupants of those 55 dwellings.
But sorry, my, to clarify, my question was though, if, when they actually applied it was for public housing, would we assess it differently, please?
True human, a mayor, public housing is the same as dwellings.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillors, any further questions before we continue to move on? Okay. We would normally have public speakers at this point in time. As I'd indicated previously, we don't have any public speakers registered for this evening's meeting. So we now move on to those items in the agenda. The next item on the agenda, I know you're councillor Gibson. I'd be very happy if you'd just raise hand if you prefer councillor Gibson. This is item six, strategic items for decision. We have five items in this section. The first is item 6.1, release of the draft governance rules for public consultation. It commences on page seven of your agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Yes, please, there is an alt, please.
Just give the councillors the opportunity to pull up that alt available and that is available to you on the screen. That's large enough. So council defer consideration of this item to a future council meeting in order to provide a further opportunity for councillors to workshop proposed governance rules consistent with your expectations, councillor Gibson. Have a mover. Do I have a second, councillors? Councillor Middlemiss? Have any opposition, councillors? No opposition? Councillors wish to speak, I would assume. Councillor Gibson, straight back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted my fellow councillors are actually going to defer this or support the deferral because if we didn't, this is actually, and no offence against our CEO, it actually gives him more power. Now, the people, we are their direct conduit. Without us, without them being able to come to us and us put things forward, it actually stops them from having the, the ability to come to us like they have now. I think that's, that's wrong. So I'm, I'm delighted that you're coming, you're supporting that. There is quite a few mistakes in here and I could go through it line by line, but it is actually about councillors having their, doing their job is what it is. Not giving it over to the CEO, we're not a board. We are actually councillors who are directly responsible to the people. The CEO, as much as we may like him, he is not directly responsible to the people. He's our employee. So by doing it the way it is designed...
Remind the gallery, it's quiet please, so we can conduct the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Doing it like it is, it actually, why have us? We need to do our job. We are hired and fired by our people, by our public and we need to be accountable. to be accountable, so that's why, and I wasn't in the room, so that's why this hasn't been, I haven't had my say in this as well, but there are a number of points in here, whether it's the, the virtue of the hybrid meetings, there is notice of motions-
Councillor Harryman, did I miss something?
A whole host of different points in here, I've got the peanut garu, that's all right, in here that really need to be addressed, so I'm asking for all councillors who wish to do a workshop to try and get a better outcome for councillors and the public. Thank you.
Councillor Gibson. Councillor Middlemiss to speak or to reserve?
Given there was no opposition, Madam Mayor, I'll forego, thanks.
I'm sorry, councillor Ferguson? I saw a clapping hand, I didn't see a hand raised, sorry. Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, I kept the electronic hand up, but it kept disappearing, so I don't know what happened.
I think it was a clapping hand as opposed to a raised, it's probably the variation, but go ahead.
Okay. I'm very pleased that councillors are supporting this, as councillor Harryman and myself and councillor Middlemiss have indicated in a briefing, there's quite a few things of concern. I believe when it comes to the mechanism of moving a motion, this is direct from a person, from the people, I don't believe that mechanism should involve anyone except a councillor and the people. And I am very, very concerned that that mechanism would even be suggested to be changed or adjusted in any way. So appreciate that, that we're deferring this for further conversation, thank you.
Thanks councillor Ferguson, give a yell if you need any assistance with that technology, we can have someone pop you through a message. Councillors, any other speakers? Councillor Lund.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, look, I'm reluctantly supporting this referral based on the fact that we did have two councillors that didn't have the full opportunity to participate in the discussions, and I would like to give them more time to do that. But I, I want to make a few points, firstly, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the officers for their work on the latest review of the governance rules. In an increasingly complex and expanding work environment, the governance rules are more than just a set of obligations, they are a roadmap to our work here in the chamber. Therefore, we should always be taking a proactive approach to review them, and we should be striving towards adopting best practice standards of the governance rules. Officers have put forward changes that are in line with best practice and strong governance outcomes. The governance rules are reviewed and updated regularly, I note this is the second time during my time in the chamber that the governance rules have been reviewed. The ask here was to approve the latest governance rules update to go out for community consultation for a period of one month, and then a full report incorporating that feedback to be tabled back to the chamber. Councillors will also have that time, would have also had that time another month to further review the report. So we're not being asked to accept the report in the original request, only to agree that the report go out to the community for consultation. But again, I acknowledge that we did have a couple of councillors that weren't able to participate fully, and I'm happy to defer it for another month, but I, at this stage, am very happy with what's been presented from the officers.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Clancy.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor, and, and a bit like councillor Lund, even though councillor Gibson's spoken to this as well, I, I note that we've, this alternate motion that's been put for us is a deferral for consideration for the, for a future council meeting, that I support. To say that I support any changes to what's been presented, I don't know yet, but I am very, very happy to have a conversation, and I think that that's what councillor Gibson has suggested, is to come back and have a conversation. But to throw my support behind an alternate motion to give people more time to have that conversation, I think that councillors should be afforded as much time as they need to be able to get to a point where they can make a decision, and whether they make a decision to support or whether they make a decision to, to not support, that, that's the individual for the councillor, but to deny anyone, you know, the time to, to have that conversation, to workshop or whatever is something I would never support, so I, I think we should give people more time, so happy to support your deferral for, for a further time, I think that's, that's a really, really good thing to do. But it also, and I think councillor Lund's touched on this, this has gone through a bit of a rigorous process, but during that rigorous process, we've had a couple of people who have been away, fair to say some people have been laid up in hospital. So it would be, would be unfair of us to try to push that through as is at this right moment, so I think that this, this deferral is a good opportunity for us to do that, but it doesn't by any way mean that the, what the officers have presented is, is short of the good work that they've done at the benchmarking across the municipality and, and the wider state as well, so I want to thank them for that. So I look forward to having that conversation, and very happy to support a deferral to, to make sure that we have time for that conversation.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillors, any other speakers? There's no opposition, so you don't get the opportunity to close councillor Gibson, but we have had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, the one is carried unanimously, thank you councillors. Next is six-two, I know you're councillor Gibson, I'm trying to catch you before you stand all the way up. Draft Kingston Street Reserve Master Plan commencing on page seventy-three of the agenda, councillor Gibson, I acknowledged you.
Moving.
Moving, thank you councillor Gibson, do I have a second, councillor Law? Any opposition councillors? Not seeing any opposition, councillor Gibson, I take it you want to speak to this one, back to you.
Just quickly, thanks Madam Mayor, this has been a long time, this has been a long process, this one. Now, there has been a number of different proposals put to this, and while they were, they're really great proposals at the time, some of the conditions have changed because sadly, there's been a lot of vandalism down at the, what was now, hang on, and this, oh, I hate it. The buildings have been vandalised greatly, so while, while the proposals before us from the past would have utilised those buildings, now it's not an option because some delightful people have taken upon themselves to vandalise them, to the point that it's not safe and it actually needs to be demolished. So I'm happy for this, I'd be even happier if we had more than the money to demolish it, that would be, that would be great, but this is also a, a park that is for the older, I'm not there yet, but I'm on the way, for the older community, because while at parks you normally, you normally have swings and everything else, this is actually going to be for those who aren't as short in the tooth as others, so I'm, I'm really happy to see this going forward, and also that Moi is actually going to take an eyesore out of our community, so that's why I'm happy to support this.
Thank you so much councillor Gibson, councillor Law to speak or reserve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just quickly to follow on, yes, it's become a bit of an eyesore, and I think it's prudent that council level the site and make it a green space, and then it'll, it, it gives us time to then develop the site into what is most appropriate for the, for the city of Moi, oh, not city of Moi, Moi, best forward as we move forward, thank you. We've got, got, got to look after ourselves, so yes, I'm in favour, thank you.
Thank you councillor Law. Councillors, any further speakers? Bit of time travel there councillor Law. No further speakers on that one? Thank you councillors, councillor Gibson, you don't get the opportunity to close on that one, so we didn't have any opposition, but we will put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, the one is carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Six-three is release of draft community, councillor Lund, I know you. Release of the draft community gardens guidelines for public consultation commencing on page one ninety-seven of the agenda, councillor Lund, seconding councillor Howe, thank you. Got things, sorry, did I get him in the? Is that what it is? I think it's, you're actually, he's also slightly behind the screens, I think it's, yeah. Okay, councillor Lund is moving, councillor Howe is seconding, do I have any opposition councillors? Question?
Thank you, I just have two questions please. Who would be responsible if after a number of years, the committee who put the proposal forward and was actually taking charge of an area, if that fell over? Who, who's then responsible, this is the question, and in, in our checklist before any area is actually given to a, a committee, it talks about the maintenance in the community garden plan. Is that enough? Because I, it, it sounds great, so I'm not against it, but I'm just concerned if people, they have great ideas and you have committees, but people fall off, so what happens then? Are we going to be responsible or not?
Okay, so probably the simple form of that without having the officers in debate, Mr Peter Santy, who do you want to refer it to?
First part of the question, I'm happy to take that one, in terms of responsibility, ultimately, if it's a garden that was developed on council land, then council would become responsible for that, and so any agreement around that would need to be clear as to what would happen if that were to occur in terms of a committee falling over a group, not being able to sustain that any further, about what would then happen to the facility. In terms of maintenance of them, as part of any agreement, I would have understood that that would be identified, who would undertake that, but again, if that does not occur, there would need to be something in agreements about how that would be then managed by council or by that group in terms of costs and so on. Similar to, for my admin, in terms of when community groups undertake works on our land, we do enter, enter agreements with them about the standard of construction and what they do in ongoing maintenance obligations, so it does happen quite regularly.
Subsequent question to that though, can we write anything in our, our guidelines or agreements to sort of cover that place?
Yes, as I touched on there, Madam Mayor, for other developments that we have, construction primarily, of facilities on our land, we always have requirements about who does what and how it's undertaken, so the community gardens, from my perspective, wouldn't sort of fit into that same theme in terms of how we would manage that, so we need to be clear upfront about how that was to occur in terms of maintenance and ongoing operations of those facilities, and as you touched on, if it did fail for some reason, then what would happen, what would, what would be the consequences of that?
Councillors, we have a mover in councillor Lund, a seconder in councillor Howe, is there still no opposition? Okay, continuing to go through, councillor Lund, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I'd like to acknowledge the officers for their significant body of work again. Community gardens are becoming increasingly popular in local communities, ours included. If executed well and with community buy-in, they can be community activation hubs with significant benefit to the broader community, providing a space for people to meet, share knowledge, learn new skills, interact with diverse people, while at the same time providing health, sorry, health benefits that include but are not limited to physical activity and access to fresh produce. The guidelines have been developed to help community groups and those interested in starting a community garden understand their responsibilities and allow the council to formalise the application and the assessment process. These are draft guidelines going out to community for, for feedback and consultation with a report to come back to chamber after the consultation period has concluded.
Thank you councillor Lund, councillor Howe to speak or reserve?
That was pretty much everything I was going to say, Madam Mayor, word for word, I'm happy to pass.
Councillors, any further speakers on this one? Councillor Gibson?
Just say, I, I'm delighted that this is finally coming forward because in the past we have had quite a few for the Moi area and the Newborough area, and we didn't have this mechanism, so I'm delighted that that's happening, and I'm even more delighted that my concerns will be addressed.
Thank you councillor Gibson, councillors, anyone further? No opposition, so you don't get to close councillor Lund, we have had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, the ones carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Six-four, this is the tourism and major event, councillor Howe, I know you. This is the Tourism Major Events Advisory Committee Recommendations for April twenty-twenty-three, commencing on page two hundred and twenty-three of the agenda, do we have a second, councillor Harryman? Any opposition? Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we've got these two fantastic and long-running events for council to consider. The first one is the AGL Loyang-Trelgan International Junior Tennis Championship. This is an international tournament that has been hosted in Trelgan for thirty years. The event provides a pathway for the international and Australian top juniors as it leads into the event to the Australian Open Junior Championship. We have the event run over fourteen days, and it involves in excess of a hundred and fifty players from over thirty-five countries. We are contributing fifteen thousand dollars with an estimated economic impact of one-point-eight million dollars, a fantastic return of a hundred and twenty dollars for every one dollar that council spends. The second event is the Latrobe City Win Network Pro-Am Golf Tournament. This also is a longstanding event, where Latrobe City have the naming rights and has been hosting this event for over twenty years. This tournament will be attracting over four hundred players, officials and spectators. Our contribution is again fifteen thousand dollars, and even though the return on investment isn't as good as the tennis, we do predict an economic impact of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for our region. Both these events are funded through the Major Events Attraction Budget, so there's no implication to our council budget, and both events have been recommended by the TMIAC or the Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee when they met in April, so very happy to support, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe, councillor Harryman to speak or reserve?
I'll speak, thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, just echoing what councillor, I was going to say councillor Clancy, it's councillor Howe, sorry councillor Howe, councillor Howe's looking, left very similar looking. Just wanted to back, to go and say, I think that people through Latrobe City notice a difference when both these events are on, with the junior tennis championship, and I think it's, we have to say full congratulations to Susie Grumley and her team for the event they produce, it's an outstanding event. Tennis Australia rates it very, very highly as far as tennis events go, and I think we've seen that with the two challenger events that have been granted to the region off the back of how well this junior tournament is run. I think we all know when it's on by the number of tennis players wandering around our cities, backpacks on with about forty thousand tennis rackets in, in turn, the suntans, which are remarkably better than my own. But it's also the effect it has on those junior players in the area, who you see turning up as ball boys and ball girls, who you see turning up to watch future stars play. This tournament has produced a number of world number ones that have turned up to this event, Federer, Nadal, Kokonakis was, was there, a number of female players that have been world number one and rated in the top ten have come through as juniors at this event and gone on to bigger and better things. And with the golf event, it's great to see a different clientele being looked after, because I know when the golf event's on, the crowd is not, not the youngsters, it's the older golfers that want to get out and have a look, and it, I believe, having talked to a couple of golfers, it actually motivates a few of those that might have got to the stage that their, their handicap is dropping, that they think it's time to give up, actually to get re-involved in it and actually get involved and get active, which is great for the entire community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harryman. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? Nope, there was no opposition, so we don't get a close, but we have had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Harryman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, thank you very much, I know you, councillor Gibson. Six-five, review of council support and expenses policy, commencing on page two thirty-six of the agenda, councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Thank you, I've got a question though, please. I, in my council papers, if you go to four point sixteen point one, now, this is talking about the mayor must advise councils after hours emergency contact, that is in this, what I have in front of me, and I thought that was coming out.
Sorry, we are on provision of six-five. Sorry councillor Gibson, we'll just give you a chance to get through. Sorry, councillor Gibson, we'll just give you a chance to get through.
4.16.1.
Yeah, I didn't think there had been a change to it.
14 of 23 in the policies.
I haven't got a track change policy there. Three, Mr. CEO, to the general manager of transition.
Yes, I think I will, Madam Mayor. Pass to Tim.
Tim Ellis.
It's working, it's working. Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. So that provision was always in there for councillors, we've included it now to include the mayor more specifically. This really is just a safety and OHS measure, so we want to make duty of care to make sure we know where councillors are. It's the same policy we have for officers, obviously not reflected in here.
I've been added in. I will, no, I will go for a deferral, and it's up to my fellow councillors if they wish to support an deferral or leave.
Oh, okay, I'm going to hold you on that alt and come back to you, I'm going to take councillor Clancy's question, and then we'll sort it out from there. Councillor Clancy?
Through you to Mr. Ellis, actually. Just what I'm trying to gather then, Mr. Ellis, is that that hasn't necessarily changed because it's always been in there for councillors, but now, under the entitlements of the mayor, it's specifically written for the mayor.
That's absolutely correct.
To include, right, okay, so it's always there, okay.
Question? Okay, so you're moving a deferral, procedural deferral of this item for consideration at the next meeting? Do I have a secondary for a procedural deferral? I'll just let the officers get the words, won't take us a minute. Councillor Middlemiss, seconding? Thanks. Just give us a moment, councillors. So to a future or did you want a date, councillor?
No, happy for a future one.
Okay, councillor Middlemiss, happy with that?
Yep.
Yep, okay. You do have the option to debate, but I think it's procedural, we could probably just move it through. Okay, any opposition, councillors? Councillor Clancy? Okay, that gives you the option, councillor Gibson.
Again, there were two that weren't in the room, but I was, I think this should be spoken about more within the council.
Briefing?
Well, not to make a decision, but the councillors need to have a discussion together with this because I personally don't feel some of the things that are being put on whoever's in the mayor's role is right.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Councillor Middlemiss to speak or to reserve?
Okay, speaking to deferral, councillor Gibson raised, I actually raised that in briefing, and I thought it might be dealt with. My concern was, it was an attempt to place councillors on a title leash and drive. I asked whether council staff restricted to the same rules, and I was told that would be checked, and if there was no response to that, I assumed that this would be deleted. I might come up, sorry. I apologise, I'll start again. Yes, I've got some concerns particularly around the item that councillor Gibson raised during the discussion, with the council discussion, I expressed some concern that councillors were being, shall we say, very closely controlled. I asked whether council staff were subject to the same restrictions, and I was told that would be checked, and given that there was no response in the following week or two, I assumed that the item that councillor Gibson raised would be removed. Ever since I've been a councillor, quite some time, councillor movement has been recorded on a computer attached to the council's security system. When you use the security system to come in, come out, those details are there. So I wonder why this we put in. This is a tiny thing to be arguing about, but it doesn't hurt to get things right. And given that two councillors weren't there, and might want to have another look at it, I'm quite happy to defer it. This is not throwing it away, this is simply deferring it, very minor issue, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Clancy?
Yeah, I don't want to make a big thing of this, and councillor Gibson, very, very happy to support, and I will even support now that I've heard you both speak about this for a deferral, because I think having a deferral to have time to have full discussion, I suppose, I threw up an opposition, and I have, and not that we've debated this, but I just want to make the point that the mayor should be treated the same as the other councillors. There's nine councillors, and the role of the mayor is one to speak on behalf of council and to chair meetings, and doesn't necessarily get special privileges above and beyond what the other councillors. And I think that councillors should be, the nine councillors should be all on equal level, and for this, and I know we're not debating now because we're debating what the deferral is, but the idea of having the mayor brought into the same level as the other councillors and not having special privileges to walk through a building at any time, I actually think is not a bad thing to do. But I'm happy to have that conversation now that we've got a deferral, we're happy to have that conversation next time it comes back. So, you know, now that you've both spoken, I'm happy to support the deferral, of course, but happy to have a conversation around entitlements and what that means for all nine councillors. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Clancy. Councillors, any other speakers? Nope. Okay, we have had opposition, so that does give you the right to close, councillor Gibson.
Sorry, I wasn't ready for a closing. Okay, look, I'm happy everyone's supporting that, and whether it's the mayor being considered a difference to councillors or councillors in the same boat shouldn't, so happy for the discussion.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. We've had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, that one is carried unanimously. Councillors, we are now on 271, amendment C131, flood mapping update, update on the progression of the amendment commencing on page 627 of your agendas. Do I have a motion, councillors? Councillor Harriman, moving? Councillor Gibson, seconding? Opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Harriman, back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just want to note that this is an update on the progression of the flood overlay, and request that the council office prepare a report no later than 4th of December. This has been ongoing for a while, it was brought about at a council meeting, and I do believe I moved it, that we had a desktop survey that was done by the West Gibson Catchment Management Authority, which increased, I think, about 600 houses into a flood overlay, and off a desktop study, I believe that was a bit too much. So this has gone back to actually have a better look at and a more objective look at. We've already had a number of, I believe, a number of changes made through discussion with community members who have real evidence of how much their house has flooded or not flooded, particularly of late. So I'm quite happy to see this progressing well, getting a lot of community input and coming back in December. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Harriman. Councillor Gibson to speak or reserve?
No, I'll speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor, but I do have a question. Now, councillor Harriman has actually alluded to the questions or the issues about they were oversellous with how many they put in the flood overlay, and we had speakers come and speak to us about different parts of that, that it just wasn't true. Can I be allayed of fears that those issues have been dealt with, so that's not an issue at all?
Might need to be a bit more specific. But through this, Madam Mayor, I mean. Is it on, Joe?
This is on, yeah.
Yep.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. The whole point of this piece of work is to actually identify the accuracy of the work. So from that point on, we can work forward on what next steps are, but this is actually reviewing the work that's been undertaken to see whether it's accurate or not, and that's what the peer review will do. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. On that note, I'm phoned.
Very much for that. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one, flood mapping? Nope. Okay, councillors, we didn't have any opposition, there isn't a close, but we did have speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, that one is carried unanimously. I'm just going to pause for a moment. If not, I'll defer it to further in the agenda. Councillors, I'm just going to change the order, I'm moving 8.1 back towards when we close, I just want to check so that you're only stepping out for the items you've actually declared on, and I just need to adjust the agenda accordingly. So we will come back to that one, councillors. The details are, the officers might just need to check that with you, but we will get there after eight, eight, I will go back to 8.1, and then we'll hit urgent. So councillors, it's just, I wanted to separation out so that these two can only have to move for the ones that they're leaving. Okay, here we go. Eight two, adoption of 2023-24 budget commencing on 284 of the agenda, I noted you, councillor Harriman.
Moving an alternate, Madam Mayor.
Alternate councillor. Eight two, councillor Lund, you leaving for the entirety of this one?
Eight two, trace.
Sorry.
Budget, yep.
Yep. It's, yeah, we didn't separate out? No separation?
Sorry, I'm totally confused, day two, councillor Harriman moving an alternate for the budget.
Yes. Has a declared interest in the budget?
Okay, one question, where's my copy of the old?
Okay, yes, we're just going to check there, because I think, was the additional copies printed? No, so I'll just read those through for you in a moment. Nature of consideration of the budget, that global overarching consideration. Comfortable? The officers are comfortable, they've noted it, we'll have it recorded in the minutes appropriately in case there's any question or clarification. Okay, councillor Harriman?
Yep.
Back to you in relation to an alt.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's only one change, which is to remove the fees for, or membership of LG Pro from the budget. The grounds, oh.
Hang on.
Oh, they're just, yep.
Just wait for the alt.
Okay.
Sorry, councillor Harriman, just some of the councillors don't have it. Okay, just noting that councillor Ferguson is absent from the meeting, we'll acknowledge councillor Ferguson when she returns. Okay, on the words, councillor Harriman, can I just get you to check those for me, please?
Yep, that's fine, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Comfortable, so all other elements and then this additional item. Councillor Harriman is a mover, do I have a secondary? Councillor Middlemiss, opposition? Councillor Clancy? Councillor Harriman, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My reasoning for removing the membership to LG Pro from the budget is that there's been a move by LG Pro board members to lobby the state government to bring in a number of draconian bits of legislation aimed at councillors, removing a number of their ability to complain about not receiving reports on time from officers, about criticizing officers' work, but leaving councillors open to a number of attacks from officers with no regard for right of reply. So I've brought it up, I know there's a number of councillors have raised this, it was raised by a number of councillors at the MAV conference, that it is unfair, and that to send a message to LG Pro and their board that we do not accept them lobbying to attack councillors and remove councillors' rights, that we remove our membership to LG Pro, hopefully as a number of other councillors will be doing, just so that a message is sent that this isn't acceptable. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Harriman, councillor Middlemiss, speaker reserve?
I'll speak now, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a procedural point, whilst councillor Harriman has spoken particularly about the alt.
It's on. It's just not. How's that? Whilst councillor Harriman has spoken about a particular addition, this matter I'm speaking to at the moment is the budget, is that correct?
You're speaking to that with the, with the additional item.
With the alt, yeah. Okay, I'll quickly cover off on the alt. I was a little offended by LG Pro, and people are probably thinking, who the hell's LG Pro? My best description of them would be council, senior council officers' union, and they've made some suggestions around reducing the rights of councillors and the abilities of councillors to operate, and like councillor Harriman, I agree, and I'd be more than happy not to pay, but the real issue that we're looking at at the moment is the budget, the budget for the coming year. This budget, as has been our last two or three, has been, although, no, I'll take that back, we had the glut of the Hazelwood building, et cetera, this budget has been founded on the principle that councillors tend to call BAU, business as usual. We've set out to continue to provide all the services that we currently provide our community, and we've looked at ways of fitting that into the budget. Now, upfront, it's a basic 3.5% rate increase, which if you look at the cost of living and the inflation for the past year and what's coming, you'll see that that's quite modest. And what we've set out to do effectively is keep the operation as it is at the moment. There is still quite a level of capital work still involved, my other fellow councillors will know that, concentrate on that, I'm sure councillor Howe will, but what you're looking at here is to continue the operation of the council as it is at the moment, together with the normal, regular amount of capital work. So I commend the officers for the work that they've done on this, there's enormous power of work being done on this. We've put it out to public, for public comment, very little of the public comment. little of the public comment was about, shall we say, the backbone, the frame of, frame of this budget. So, by and large, my own sampling of community feeling on this, this is a good budget that changes very little. Our community, our city continues as usual, BAU. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Clancy.
Oh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I am, I was caught a little bit surprised it was coming to me straight away. I am happy with the original proposal, so all I'm speaking in is opposition to removing the LG Pro thing, I think we'll have an opportunity, hopefully we'll have an opportunity to speak about the budget in a wider form in a second, but just to councillor Harriman's point, if there is a group that have stepped over the line or done as you've said that they have, you know, I'm reading their response to the councillor conduct framework, which I think is the document that you might be talking about, I don't know, I think that's, that might be the one that LG Pro have talked about councillor conduct in, is that the one?
It's part of it.
Yeah, it's part of it, yeah. I, I think that there's a wider conversation that we can have with someone rather than removing our membership, and I think that removing our membership would be extremely detrimental to the officers all the way, you know, we employ a thousand staff within the local government sector here at Latrobe City Council, and for them not to have access to training, to networking opportunities, for them not to have access to support services, not just through executive leadership programmes that they do run, but also through the other leadership programmes and the development that our staff have, would be detrimental to the staff. So, look, I, as much as I'd like a little bit further information about where they might have stepped over the line in, because I think that LG Pro is for staff, it's not to step into the councillor realm, and if they have, then that's something that we need to do, but I think to remove funding or membership, a membership funding section in the budget would be detrimental to the staff being able to access, and maybe there's another pathway that we need to find to, you know, statewide through the MAV, the Miss Hall Association of Victoria, to have a further conversation with LG Pro to make sure that what they are dealing with is staff issues rather than councillor issues. But I am speaking in opposition to the alternate, which removes the membership, and, but happy to speak further in the budget if we get the opportunity to do that.
Thanks councillor Clancy, acknowledging councillor Ferguson's return. Any other speakers, councillors? Councillor Howe.
I'd also like to speak against the alt. Some of these programmes that LG Pro offer, they're not offered with any other organisation. So I'm talking about the, some of the programmes like the emerging leaders programme, the executive leadership programme, the mastering management programme, they've got the mentoring programme, the sector complement programme, and we also get to participate in the Australasian Management Challenge, and we're also eligible to nominate for the awards of excellence. As I said before, there are no similar programme options that have the same recognition levels across the local government sector, and similarly for the award of excellence, there are no award programmes that local government as a whole sector can participate in. And this, back in two thousand twenty-two, we did win the community asset and infrastructure initiative for over two-point-five million dollars, so, and what's this mean? It puts Latrobe City on the map that we're a professional and well-run organisation, so when we're looking for staff, particularly higher-up management staff, we become an option where they want to come and work for us because they know that we are a well-run and real functioning council. So, yeah, just to speak against that, because we, these programmes, we can't get anywhere else, we need LG Pro, and there's probably other options to voice our dissatisfaction with some of the things they're saying. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, I support the alt. I think, you know, even a deferment of these payments until such time as LG Pro can give some kind of guarantee that they won't be seeking to sidestep councillors by the Victorian Government. I think it's a big concern for democracy, it's a big concern for our roles as councillors, and I don't think that, at this point in time, until they can offer us a bit more in fairness, that that's really something that rate payers should be paying for right now, they need the representation on the ground, and although I appreciate all the points that have been raised around other programmes that are being offered, I think this falls on the LG Pro's shoulders to show to councils and to councillors that they are not interfering in the process of democracy. Thank you.
You, councillor Ferguson. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, I, I actually was going to, maybe still am, going to abstain from the budget because I haven't been in the room for a while. There's, yes, I have been earlier in the year and that's great, but there's a hell of a lot that goes on and has gone on the last couple of months, so I'm, whilst some of the other items in the agenda have been easier to go through, especially on medication, well, that's true, this isn't. You really need to have your wits about you. Now, I actually am getting splinters a bit because I agree with what my two fellow councillors have said about LG Pro, but I also agree with what my other councillors had. Yes, it is really great what LG Pro do with ensuring that the officers are trained properly to grow them, that's really important, so I agree with that, but I do not and never will agree to, whether it be, and that's why I moved the alt for the governance rules before, I will never agree to people who are not actually voted in by the public tell the councillors how they should or shouldn't do their job. It is the people who tell us how to do their job.
Gallery, I just need to remind the gallery, you can stop the clock for a minute, we need to be able to conduct the business, you're not to engage with the meeting, if you're going to continue to engage with the meeting, then we won't be able to continue. Councillor Gibson, if you'd like to continue, please.
Thank you. So, as I say, I take both sides on note, but I would like, is there another way without the offices being detrimental to the offices and their development, is there another way that we can actually send a message loud and clear to LG Pro that they are not the councillors, they are not the elected members? So, I don't know.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? Councillor Ferguson? Hand raised, had a question?
Yes, I'm just wondering where the status of that is at, because my understanding is that LG Pro have written to the Victorian Government, I'm just wondering what the status or outcome of that is currently to be discussing, so I'd like to know what the likelihood would be that the Victorian Government are going to overstep councillors.
Not relevant to the debate, councillor Ferguson, it's a question outside of that, the officers could take that as an update for briefing, but it's not something that's material to the actual agenda item in the alt that's been put, this is just around the funding in relation to the budget, but happy for the officers to note it and seek further advice for a subsequent briefing for the question.
So that we know whether we're funded or not.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll be happy to get you an update on that. Thanks councillor Ferguson, councillor Gibson.
Question, I'm not trying to debate what you've just said, but actually knowing where that's at would actually help me make a decision now.
Would have been a good question in advance of the meeting, councillors, I can't rely on the officers to have that information available, no. So, it puts them on the spot for something that they're not necessarily directly attached to, so. Councillors, any further questions? Anyone else want to speak? Okay, so we had opposition, so councillor Harriman, would you like to take the opportunity to close?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I will. Just to advise councillors, this proposal has already been lobbied to the state government to ministerial level. What they are asking is to basically put, and this is LG Pro's senior board, put restrictions on councillors that do not apply the same direction to senior officers. This is putting restrictions on councillors on what they can and cannot ask for from officers. This is giving the officers the opportunity that if, and this is an example that was put in there, that if a councillor requests repeatedly or on multiple occasions information from an officer which is not forthcoming, the officer can take action against the councillor, the councillor cannot take action against the officer. That is not acceptable in any way, shape or form. I understand this vote will probably go down, that is fine, if there are other ways we can send our message to the LG Pro, that would be good, but when you're, when you're at the stake and burning, councillors, just remember this moment. Thanks.
Councillor Harriman. Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Now, this is in favour of the alt with point twenty-four added, those in favour, councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss, those against, councillor Clancy, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law and myself, it is defeated. Councillors?
Where was that motion, budget?
The budget will now be considered on the original motion, so we'll now put that, if there's a councillor who's prepared to move the original motion.
Happy to move.
Councillor Clancy, happy to move. So there we are, councillor Middlemiss, would you like to second?
Oh, yeah. Happy to second and take my speeches read.
Okay, I can do that for you.
I want to hear it again.
Very good. Councillor Clancy is our mover, councillor Middlemiss is the second, opposition? Councillor Clancy, back to you.
Thanks. Before I speak on this, and I'm hoping for a little bit of leeway here, I am keen for what councillor Harriman has brought forward, for that to be a further discussion, I'm keen to read what you clearly have read, it hasn't come for us in front of, you know, for us to have a look at, but I'd be a bit keen and much like councillor Ferguson to know where that's at, because I think it is an important discussion, and while it's important, and it's important that we absolutely are across those sort of things, I'd hate to think that that discussion that we've just had about one membership base, and we are members of so many organisations across not just Victoria but Australia, that that one discussion doesn't at all take away from what is a very good budget, and as councillor Middlemiss has already said, around the business as usual, this is about an operating budget for the next twelve months for this council, and while we see that the operating budget is around a hundred and fifty million dollars, forty-three-point-eight million dollars of that is for capital works, twenty-one million is being committed to the road network, and there's four-point-nine million for the Marshalls Road upgrade at the Terelgan-Maffra Road intersection, and that's really, really important, and two-point-four million dollars for the Gibbsland Logistics Precinct. So, it's quite a large budget that has lots of parts in it around Glenview Park to Terelgan, the rec reserve, the new energy projects that we've got, street lighting, LED upgrades, you know, car park works, all the bits and pieces, and this is a budget that we have worked on quite hard, and as councillor Gibson talked about, we were talking about the budget back in January, February when we were having workshops on it, and we came to a point where we thought that we were okay, and then we took that out to community consultation, and I would do, not a justice to the amount of people who put, but I think it was forty-four submissions we had, happy to take anyone who's corrected me on that, forty-four submissions received over our consultation period, and then an unscheduled council meeting that we had in, or, you know, off the, the normal scheduled council meeting that we had on the fifteenth of May, and we've received submissions, we've written back to those people to talk about their wants and wishes around this budget, and we would always encourage people to speak to the councillors about their ongoing concerns, whether it be for your club, whether it's your roads, your footpath, it's your lighting upgrades, whatever you need, that's what informs us when we start working on it in January, February. But this has been an exhaustive process with the community involved in it, the officers have spent a lot of work, the councillors have spent an enormous amount of time running through, and sometimes line by line by line, to work out what is funded, but what we get to tonight is a very good balanced operating budget, which brings some new renewals and some works over the next twelve months as well, and I'm happy to recommend that to my fellow colleagues.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss, to speak a reserve.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors we should speak to this one? Councillor Harriman and councillor Gibson.
Councillor Gibson.
Swap it, councillor Gibson and councillor Harriman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm not laughing at either of you, I'm just watching the screen over there. Thank you, Madam Mayor, but actually, that's, that's why my, and I will abstain from the vote, because we have had a, an unscheduled council meeting on the budget, we have had people come and speak to us, and I wasn't in the room, so, and I've got no idea what and who and how and why, I don't know, so I'm sorry for that reason, I'm not saying that budget as usual is good, bad or otherwise, I'm not saying that, but I haven't been there for all of the conversation.
Can I just check councillor, were you provided with the copies of the submissions? Okay, thank you, that's fine, thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Harriman.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I will point out that through all the submissions we got, there were no complaints about the three-point-five percent rise, but I have been contacted in the last couple of days by a couple of people who are not happy about the three-point-five percent rise taking place at this time, with the economic situation, we're facing increased interest rates, cost of living going up, they made it quite, quite plain that they weren't happy with that and with the, with the increase that it's going to, going to, going to put on them. I did advise them that had they gone and gone through the budget process, they weren't aware of it, so I just wanted to point out, Madam Mayor, that there are people out there that aren't happy with the three-and-a-half percent rise, and maybe, as a council, we need to start looking at how we spend our money, knowing that things are getting tighter with, with power bills going up nineteen to twenty-six percent as of July first, with interest rates continuing to rise, this is having a huge impact on our community, especially those that can least afford it. We know everything's going up with rents, with fuel, and it's just getting harder and harder for people, those that complained to me made it quite obvious and quite plain that they're already doing it tough and this is going to make it tougher, so I just wanted to put that out there, Madam Mayor, that in future this might be something we have to take into consideration, is maybe services, maybe staff have to be cut to cover how people are not coping with their living standards being eroded the way they are at the minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, and just one more thing, Madam Mayor, as I always do, I'd just like to point out that there is an EPA levy charge there of one-point-two-one-seven million dollars, that is not a council tax, that is not a council charge, that does not go to council, we pay to collect it on behalf of the state government, who then put it in a slush fund that I think at last time I heard, had built back up to about five-hundred million, six-hundred million dollars, which is used theoretically to help reduce landfill and to increase recycling. The last spend from that six-hundred million dollar fund, which went towards helping that, was for computers for Parks Victoria, and I'm sure that had a huge impact on landfill. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Harriman. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Law.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to commend our officers for a very, very balanced budget, we're taking on no new borrowings in this twenty-three, twenty-four financial year, we're producing a very conservative budget, we've been through a time where we've had our big build with our projects, and at this point in time, we've seen fit to pull in the purse strings and actually really tighten our belt and make it so that we are going to have a very good surplus as we move forward, and I take councillor Harriman's point on board, but I think as a council, we have looked at that and we're trying to reduce our costs as best as possible, and by not increasing our borrowings in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, I think we're being very prudent and we're setting ourselves up to be in a very good position as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Law. Councillors, any further speakers? We didn't have any opposition, we don't have the opportunity for you to close, councillor Clancy, but we have had speakers, we'll put it to the vote, those in favour, councillor Clancy.
I did reserve.
Sorry, you did reserve?
I did reserve.
Okay, go for your life.
I retract my vote. It's all been covered, I know what I say, but.
You did it before.
Ah, dear, councillor Harriman stole my thunder on the EPA levy. He, oh, I was going to use the word fraudulent, but that's wrong. It's, it's a grab for your rates which goes into state revenue and doesn't come back into local government services. It, it's unfortunate, but we have to pay for the collection of it and we have to lump it into our budget, which is unfortunate. A point councillor Harriman made was that he anticipates that the electricity costs will go up between nineteen and twenty-six percent in the coming year. We are an enormous user of electricity, street lights, everything, all that kind of stuff. And we've managed to hold our costs down to three and a half percent. Nobody thinks it's a great idea to put up by three and a half percent. But it is the fact of life, interest prices. I mean, anybody who goes into a supermarket now knows that the, the prices have gone through the roof. We've done our very best to hold those down as far as we can so that there is no change to what ratepayers receive from our council in the coming year. Business as usual, the same level of services plus, and I'm quite surprised that councillor Howe normally lists all the capital works and he didn't. But if you have a look through the budget, you'll see that we're still having quite a good level of capital works, that's improvement of roads, facilities, buildings, et cetera. But nobody will lose any services and we've kept the costs to a very reasonable level. So I'm happy, as I did previously, to commend this budget. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Now we've had speakers and we will put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself. Those against councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson. Those abstaining councillor Gibson. That is carried. Thank you councillors. And we are moving on to eight three. This is council committee matters for consideration commencing on three eighty-five of the agenda. Do I have a motion councillors? Sorry, eight three council committee matters for consideration, three eighty-five of the agenda. Everybody move. Thank you councillor Howe. Seconda councillor Clancy. Opposition councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe, back to you.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. As councillors, we are appointed to various committees, which we are then used as a conduit between our community and our council. At the February meeting, it was resolved to receive a report on the current committees and their representation. This review has been undertaken by, by our officers and the proposed recommendations are in this motion. It lists our endorsed committees, being community asset committees, we've got eleven, statutory committees, we have two, council committees, we have twenty-four. And then we have external committees along with council representation. This motion also updates, adopts the updated terms of reference for seven committees to make them compliant. They're listed in number three, I think, on the, in the report. It abolishes the Latrobe City Transition Task Force and the War and Memorial Advisory Committee. There's also four committees that have been, have completed their objectives and no longer required. Council, note council representatives are no longer to be involved in the Regional Aboriginal Justice Advisory Committee or the Gibbsland Climate Change Committee. We rescind council committee policy, which was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, which our officers no longer believe required. I'm happy to move.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Clancy, to speak or reserve?
No need to speak, thanks, madam mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Clancy. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, madam mayor. While most of it I agree with, what I don't agree with is abolishing the Latrobe City Transition Task Force. Now, if we don't have our own, which we set up a couple of years ago, and at the time it was bipartisan, state and federal. Now, we had everyone around the table bipartisan federally and statewide, we had everybody around the table apart from the state government. Now, they were relying on the LVA. Now, as we know, that hasn't been very affluent in providing or ensuring, ensuring that there is ongoing jobs, ongoing companies going forward. That's what we need. We have had in the last little while, we had the announcement about timber. That's going to be cut out. Now, we're very concerned about the mill. We're, we haven't got replacement industries. Now, that's what we thought the LVA would be all about and it hasn't delivered. So that is exactly what the task force was to do. So if we're not doing this, if we're not standing up, we're relying on the state government who is actually stripping jobs from here. I'm sorry, I, I cannot support this as is because our community really desperately need us now to help with industry and jobs going forward. So that's why I cannot accept this because we had on that committee, we even had Chris Bowen, who is now the minister for climate change federally. So to take that away when, yes, I, I was only there for the two meetings and then because it was mayoral representation and then it got handballed to the next mayor, which is fine. But that's what it was set up for and the only ones not around the table was the state government. I'm sorry, we cannot allow that type of committee to go by the way and put all our faith in the LVA with the state government, who has just taken our, our legs with the timber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, any more speakers? Councillor Middlemiss?
Thank you, madam mayor. The whole thrust of this report is to update the terms of reference from a number of committees which are key to, to our operations going forward. Some of our aspirations, planning for the future, et cetera. The one that councillor Gibson is very concerned about is the abolition of the Latrobe City Transition Task Force. Now, the Transition Task Force was an idea of councillors and officers to incorporate the federal government, the state government and our council into an advisory group to handle the transition away from brown coal power generation. And of course, you can add to that now the transition away from native forest based paper manufacturer and sawmills, et cetera. The reason why we are abolishing this committee is simply the state government decided they would not take part. They handballed it and said, no, you deal with the Latrobe Valley Authority. We wanted to deal at a much higher level, we wanted to deal with government. After all, like it or not, we are the government of, of Latrobe City. And the government has said, no. So you can't keep a committee going if the members don't want to be part of it. So really what this report does is just simply report to our community that the state government has a different idea about transition than we had as a council. Federal government was on side, council was on side, state government, government said, no, LVA will handle that. So that's the reason why that committee is going. It's not a decision by this, well, it ultimately is when you vote. But it's not a decision by this council to abolish the committee. It is a result of the outworkings of what we hoped would occur, but it didn't. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? Councillor Howe? Councillor Clancy, did you want your reserve option?
No, I didn't reserve.
No, that's fine. Councillor Howe?
Uh, no, nothing more to add, thanks, madam mayor. Happy to go to the vote.
Thank you councillors. On the basis of that, we've had speakers, we'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself. Those against councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman and councillor Ferguson. That is carried. Thank you councillors. H four is the relocation of council meetings commencing on five twenty-three of the agenda. Just, we'll acknowledge councillor Gibson's leaving the meeting. I'm sorry, what have we got? Oh. Okay. Let's get it through. Sorry. It's all right, that's what I've got on this list. And it's not, because I was going to say we already did that one last time, didn't we? So eight four, we are on the Commonwealth Games request for delegation to the chief executive officer to sign funding agreements. Councillor Clancy moving?
Yeah, happy to move.
Seconda councillor, councillor Law. Opposition councillors. No opposition. Councillor Clancy, back to you.
Uh, just by way of explanation, this is, this is council moving for, for delegations to the CEO to sign funding agreements with Sport and Recreation Victoria for capital works at the following sites, the Gibbsland Sports and Entertainment Park, or known as Crinigan Road or Falcons Park in the past, the Gibbsland Regional Indoor Sports Stadium, which is formerly known as the Terrelegan Basketball Stadium, Netball Stadium, and the Ted Summerton Reserve, formerly known as the Ted Summerton Reserve. This is required, this. Yeah, that's right. Required for the delivery of the two thousand and twenty-six Commonwealth Games. And this council would be increasing the delegation for the CEO to sign those agreements.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillor Law, speak or reserve? I think any other councillors which should speak? No close on this one councillor Clancy, but I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, that one is carried unanimously.
Just a question, madam mayor?
Councillor Harriman?
Just been going an hour and a half, wonder if we might partake of a five minute break?
Where are we? I can do that councillors?
Yeah, take a break?
Make it ten.
Ten, perfect. Thanks, madam mayor.
Councillor Harriman, we will adjourn. Councillors could have a mover for an adjournment. Councillor Harriman moving, councillor Clancy seconding, no opposition? Anyone listening? Anyone care? No. Okay, adjournment, ten. No, okay, adjournment, ten. Sorry, they're catching up, finding out what page we're on. Five twenty-nine, councillor, thank you councillor Harryman's moving. Have a second please councillor Gibson, thank you very much, any opposition councillors? There's no opposition on that one, does anyone want to speak to that one? No, no speakers, no opposition. One's carried unanimously, thank you so much. Eight six is the draft assessment. Management strategy for twenty-three to thirty-two commencing on page five forty-five of the agenda. You're right there councillor Gibson? Okay, just hold for a moment. You're good? Comfortable?
I'm happy to move it.
Councillor Clancy's moving, do I have a second please councillor Law is my second, do I have any opposition? No opposition, councillor Clancy, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Okay, anyone else? No, carry that one unanimously, thank you councillors. Eight seven, policy renewal programme revocation of outdated policies commencing on five seventy. Do I have a mover, councillor Middlemiss is moving, do I have a second please? Councillor Law is my second, do I have any opposition? There's no opposition. Anyone wish to speak to this one?
Very straightforward, no thank you.
There we go, one's carried unanimously, thank you councillors. Eight eight, authorisation of council officers under Planning an Environment Act. One hundred and eighty-seven commencing on six twenty-one, moving again councillor Middlemiss, thank you very much. Do I have a second councillor Howe? Opposition? No opposition, have anyone want to speak? The one's ca- uh, Howe. Howe. You're going backwards, I'll leave you two to it. Okay, sorry, so that was a mover on councillor Middlemiss, second to councillor Howe with no opposition, no speakers, it's moved unanimously. Councillors, I'm now moving back to eight one. Just wait for the slides to scroll back, just wanted to get clear on that. So councillors, just to be clear on this one. The majority of the items to be considered in relation to, uh, eight one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, community grants and sponsorship programme round two. Items one to three are those where all councillors are able to participate. Items four and five, which we'll consider next, are those where councillors have declared an interest.
Move items one to three.
Thank you very much councillor Middlemiss, do I have a second, uh? Councillor Gibson, have any opposition? There's no opposition, councillor Middlemiss, did you want to speak to the grants?
No, thank you madam mayor.
Anyone else need to speak to grants? No, I didn't see what happened, I missed that completely. One to three are carried unanimously, thank you councillors, we're now moving on to consider this same item with the absence of councillors, Harryman and Lund.
I'll move, when they leave the room madam mayor, I'm happy to move items four and five.
Sure. Okay, we've got these two councillors who have declared an interest in relation to that. I note to councillor Ferguson, did you have a question?
I was just gonna second that.
Okay, okay councillor Middlemiss is moving, councillor Ferguson is my second, do I have any opposition councillors? No, anyone wish to speak? Councillor Middlemiss.
Just briefly, madam mayor, this is the second round of our annual, um, community grants, which go out to community organisations for, uh, equipment, uh, events etcetera. Uh, the budget this time was two hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, if members of the gallery are a little, um, mystified as to why we're doing it in two parts, uh, there wouldn't be a councillor in this room who isn't a member of a local organisation, or two, or three, or more, and from time to time we find, uh, we have to vote on things that, uh, awards that are going to organisations we're associated with, so it's divided up, that's why the two councillors have left the room. But, um, this is a grants programme, uh, that is welcomed, I think, by every organisation in our community, and it is a way of us supporting community organisations, uh, I think there's little more than I need to add to that, thank you.
Thank you so much councillor Middlemiss, councillor Ferguson, did you want to speak or reserve?
No, thank you.
Thanks councillor Ferguson, councillor Clancy.
Just ever so briefly, madam mayor, councillor Middlemiss has covered off on why we're splitting this in two halves, uh, and, and, and spoke very eloquently about the community grants process. We would, uh, as a council encourage community groups, uh, organisations to make applications for these funds. Uh, we had a hundred and forty-four applications across six categories, those six categories are minor capital works and minor equipments, um, community minor events, uh, community wellbeing, uh, community events of significance, and community major sponsor. So if you are a, a group, organisation, club, uh, venue, and you need a minor equipment, or you need minor capital works, or you just need a little bit of help, um, that's not going to be met by selling sausages or lamingtons, this is exactly what this is for. So we actually allocate money every single year as a part of our annual budget as we just passed before, and we would, uh, really like to make sure that we are getting the funds out to, uh, as many organisations as they can, whether it's two thousand dollars, one thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, or ten thousand dollars. What they need is an opportunity to do what they do, which is a very, very important part of our community. The, the community organisations, clubs and volunteers are the people who run this, this community of ours, and we want to support you in doing that, so please, um, contact our grants officer, have a chat with them about what grants you might be after, whether that be for minor equipment or, or minor capital works in the, in the rooms, uh, or for an event or something like that, we can help you with that. And we'd really like to make sure that we have, um, more applications next time so that we can spread, uh, those, uh, that funding allocation um, around the entire city, so please encourage people to do that.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Councillor Gibson, did you want to speak to it?
Yes, please, madam mayor. What I'd like to do is actually thank all the different organisations and committees and groups that actually have applied. Some of them, as you, as people see in the paperwork, we actually didn't have enough money left because there were so many great projects. But what they do with the little piece of money that we give them, it goes so far. So I'd really like to thank and encourage all of the community groups for what they do, and I, I, I just couldn't say thank you enough, and also to encourage them to keep doing what they're doing, thank you.
I'm not sure if anyone can hear me, but my sound's gone. You're clear? Is that any clearer?
That's better, now I can hear.
Did you get the vote? Do you want me to redo the vote? Okay, I'm just going to redo, councillors, just to recount, those in favour councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss and myself, it's carried unanimously. Councillor Ferguson, we will just retrieve, councillor Harryman, councillor Lund, won't be a moment. Welcome back councillors. Uh, the next on the agenda is the item nine, which is urgent business, I'm not aware of any matters of urgent business, Mr CEO? Nothing required in relation to that, uh, there are no reports at items ten or eleven for tonight's consideration, that brings us into item twelve. There's notice as a motion, I note to councillor Harryman, it's one item listed as a section tonight, I note to councillor Gibson. Item twelve point one is the native timber industry in Victoria commencing on six hundred and thirty-nine of the agenda, councillor Harryman, to you.
Moving madam mayor.
Happy to move, thank you so much councillor Gibson seconding. Any opposition, councillor Middlemiss? Councillor Harryman, back to you.
Thanks madam mayor, um, I've really brought this up, as, as everyone's aware, there was an agreement, um, to end native harvesting in twenty thirty. The industry had set up for that date, um, and at the last budget it was brought forward to first of January twenty twenty-four. With this notice of motion, I'm asking that we acknowledge the history of the native timber industry harvesting, not only in Latrobe City but Gipsland, and the significant contribution it makes to Gipsland's economy and community. Three years ago, four years ago, the native timber industry was worth five point six billion dollars to the Gipsland economy. It is currently at one point three billion dollars, that's even with the cuts that have taken place, and a sixty to seventy percent reduction in the availability of, uh, coops to log. That is a huge, huge impact, and it relates to thousands and thousands of jobs. Part of this notice of motion is authorising the CEO to release a public statement to the media, including publishing on council sodium, social media that we condemn the state government's decision to bring forward the end of the native timber harvesting industry, calls on the state government to rescind this decision and consult with the impacted communities in relation to the future of the native timber industry, and requests that all local members of state parliament, no matter what their colour or ilk, acknowledge council's opposition and advocates on council's behalf, and request that council officers collaborate with other Gipsland councillors in relation to advancing council's position on this matter. We talk about sustainability, we talk about climate change. The United Nations has actually come out and has the harvesting of native timber as one of the main ways to fight climate change. Through Europe, we're seeing fifteen percent of foresters have, forests harvested. To put it in context, in Victoria, six percent of our native forests are available to be harvested. Of those, zero point zero, zero four percent are harvested. That equates to four trees out of every ten thousand on an eighty-year cycle. We don't harvest what is traditionally known as old growth forests. There will be arguments from some that we do, that was with the change of law, normally on a cycle of harvesting is sixty to eighty years. The law has been changed, or the, the, the wording on what an old growth forest is now one that is sixty to seventy years or older. So we have an industry that was on its knees already, that create, that produces so much for this region, and is now, we have the situation where we have contractors who have spent millions of dollars on a quid- of dollars on equipment, now have millions of dollars' worth of equipment that are basically useless and cannot be used anywhere else. And I've got three seconds left, so I'll leave it to her respond, Madam Mayor. And thank you, councillor Middlemiss, for opposing to give me time.
Councillor Harryman. Councillor Gibson, seconded?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, because I could never remember who it was overseas, but it's the United Nations. How come they can actually understand that the forestry industry actually helps with climate change? How come they can understand it, but we can't? How come we have native forestry in New South Wales and Tassie and Queensland? I thought there was more. Okay. But how come they can have it, but we can't? This is actually, trees absorb carbon. That's why the United Nations actually see it, that it is helping climate change. So I do not understand, if we're all about climate change and wanting to make a difference with emissions, this is what you use. So why aren't we doing it? This is actually the best renewable industry you can get on the planet. So why are we not using it? Why are we putting one point three billion dollars that we can least afford out of our economy? Why are we putting that at risk? There is so many jobs that are at risk. Walking down the street, you eyeball everyone as to, oh, no, we're voting against it. We're voting against you and your job. We're voting against you putting food on your table. I will not be part of it.
Councillor Gibson. Councillor Middlemiss, and then councillor Ferguson, unless you are reserving councillor Middlemiss. Sorry, no, you're opposing. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I hold the state government largely responsible for what has occurred, and nobody likes more than me to give a kick to a government. But in this case, the motion condemns the state government, calls on the state government to rescind this decision, but I'm yet to be convinced that there is sufficient resource left, bearing in mind the environmental expectations of city slickers who control the government, to sustain the industry at its present capacity even to 2030. I don't think the industry can last that long. I spent a day, two weeks ago, I drove north of here as far as I could go, and it's fair to say that the available logging country has well and truly been scalped. Let's have a look at what's happened in the logging industry over the last decade or two, and this is a repeat of speeches I've made in this chamber on several occasions. We've been allowed to overlog. It's quite admitted now, we overlog. The resource is diminishing rapidly. The state government is losing fifty million dollars a year plus in its attempt to regulate the industry. I don't know how that can occur. There's been nothing done over the years to reduce the size of the industry to sustainable levels. Natural attrition or market forces were unsuccessful. Yet in the fishing industry, the government went and bought licences, bought boats, took people out of the industry to reduce it to a sustainable level. It didn't do that with the timber industry. There's been insufficient environmental focus on timber harvesting, hence the reason harvesting is stopped at the moment is because of court bans. Councillor Harryman, which possum was it? Leadbaiters, that's right. The promised plantations, I've seen well over a hundred million dollars of promises for plantations to replace forest timber in the last three or four years. That money never appeared. So really, but let's move on to the result. Towns like Orbost, towns like Hayfield, once the sawmills go, there is nothing left. There is no economic activity in these towns. They will be destroyed. And the ironic thing is Hayfield is probably the future of timber in Australia. The operation there, I think it's Ash it's called, the most high-tech facility I've ever seen in the timber industry. Had a tour there a couple of years ago. In the valley here, we've lost two hundred and fifty to three hundred jobs by the closure of the reflex mill, reflex machine at the paper mill, all because of those factors I've said before, and I go back to, I don't think there is enough timber there. But we all know that regional and rural Australia is a vastly different economic and jobs environment to the city. If you live in the city, you lose your job at the sawmill. You jump on the tram and get another job three or four hundred metres down the track. You can't do that in Orbost, Hayfield, and I hesitate to say, for the two hundred and fifty, three hundred jobs lost at Maryvale, it'll be very hard for those people.
Do you need an extension, councillor Middlemiss?
Be but.
Do you need an extension?
I wouldn't mind if you're feeling generous.
That's right, you don't need to vote it anymore, just got to gift it.
Most of those displaced from the timber industry will not be able to remain in their own home and find a new job. So we must face devastation facing these communities. Housing costs will prevent them moving to the city. The two hundred thousand dollar house in Orbost, million dollar house in Melbourne, how do you make that leap? The answer, in my opinion, for the timber industry and the state government to jointly, well, first of all, I should say, they're jointly guilty of creating this mess, the timber industry and the state government. State government can't withdraw from this. Government must move to attract new industry and employment opportunities to the affected communities. And I'm not talking about the legendary LVA four thousand quote in the latest brochure jobs they created after the closure of Hazelwood. I've yet to find anybody who has got one of those four thousand jobs. Let's say they weren't full-time permanent employment, on which you could base a loan to buy a house, go ahead. No matter what the outcome of this resolution, I'll be happy to support a resolution at the next meeting, have to work on it with people, demanding real support for the communities that will be dramatically affected, if not destroyed. And why I base my focus on that is simply, I do not believe, because of the errors of the last three or four decades, I don't believe that the timber industry is sustainable going ahead, and of course, I'm setting that beside the expectations of the city voters who control our government and their environmental views. So I'm not at all condemning councillor Harryman's motion. I understand the passion behind it, I understand the anger, but I think we have to look past that into getting something done about all these people are going to lose their job. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Ferguson, you're next up.
Thank you. First of all, my heart, like all of us, goes out to Orbost and Hayfield towns especially, all the people affected by this. A couple of things that spring to mind, which I think why this, I'm supporting this nomination is it needs to be a stronger message, being that, you know, a lot of this will drive further into pine plantation, which absolutely ruins the soil, as we know, unlike native replants. And not only that, we've got, in our local areas, we've got koalas suffering that are relying on pine to eat. They can't eat pine. They can't eat pine needles. They need regeneration of blue gum and things that they can eat, and it just breaks my heart that this is all happening this way without, I feel, enough depth of thought for the rural people, people in these communities, and for the impacts of this, which, many of which I've just mentioned, have never been acknowledged publicly. So I'd just like to put that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Clancy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This is one of those moments, and it has happened a couple of times in my years as councillor, my seven years as well, where as I come into this discussion with one idea, and then you listen to people speak, and now, and use your words, councillor Gibson, to say, sitting on the fence and getting splinters. Councillor Harryman brought this forward, and I was fully supportive as I read the notice of motion and heard councillor Harryman speak to us through the week about what this was. I actually think that this is something that I wanted to support and something that I think should be supported. And then I hear councillor Middlemiss talk about supporting that and supporting that in a productive and more collaborative way, and I start to get those splinters, I start to get that idea that maybe there's a better way. So for me, in my notes that I've made, I actually think that, even though I've, and I've said this before, with notices of motion that have three points with points A, B, and C sitting in two, I'm always going to have problems because there's a line or a word or something. If they were one sentence each, I'd vote on them every single time, but when they're complex, because the situation's complex, it makes it very, very difficult. I think that part of the role of council should be advocacy, and this is what councillor Harryman's bringing this in. He is advocating for the timber industry, and I don't think there's a single person in this room, whether they be in the gallery or sitting in, you know, as an officer or as a councillor, who thinks that this is a good idea, bringing this forward. I don't think there's anyone who thinks that this, bringing it forward from the six years that it was meant to be to now, or giving it six months, is a good idea. It's not a good idea. It affects families, it affects people. No, the state government's bringing this forward sooner than what they were is not a good idea, in my opinion. And I think that the role that council can have in that is advocacy. But asking to rescind a decision that's been made, when the CFMEU can't get that across the line, when people have been talking about it for such a long period of time, I'm not sure what we're going to get from this, when other councils have stepped away and said, talk to us about where the workers are going to go rather than fight it. I'm concerned about that, but I think that it's good that we should advocate, and I absolutely commend councillor Harryman for the fight in this. But asking for all members of parliament to acknowledge council's opposition, it's a big ask for all members of parliament. What we're asking for is a big thing here. But we have to remember, this is about jobs, this is about families who have jobs, this is about the Gipsland economy, and if you think about that, this is something I want to support. But it can't help, and as councillor Middlemiss said, loves giving the government a good kick, this starts to feel a little bit like giving the government a bit of a kick. And even though that we should advocate for those people who are losing their jobs and for the families that are going to struggle, if there's a better way to do it at the next council meeting, I am happy to change the way that I came into this and move to saying, I won't support this notice of motion as it's written, and there is a better way, we can bring that back next council meeting, but we need to do it very, very quickly because these people are hurting.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Councillor Gibson?
Question though, please, Madam Mayor. I thought there was a three-month rule. If that goes down, that we cannot bring something similar to that to the council within three months.
It's not similar, councillor Gibson, councillor, if I'm correct me if I'm wrong, councillor Middlemiss is actually speaking to transition. So is it speaking more about support for, so the subsequent steps of, as opposed to this, which is speaking to a rescission and to all local members acknowledging? So there's slightly different effect, so it would, in my, I'm happy to take advice. Yeah, I'm happy to take advice from the officers, but my read of it would be, that would be allowable. I couldn't see a reason why it wouldn't be, because it is sufficiently different than, it's not just the title that would, does that help? Yeah, I can check it. If you want to check with the CEO.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just looking at the governance rules, it says a notice of motion must be rejected, which is identical or substantially similar to a notice of motion or rescission motion being conceded by council and lost. So it hinges on whether it's substantially similar. So if it's, the words I've heard tonight is different, then it wouldn't be rejected on that basis.
Okay, so that should overcome that problem. Councillors, any other speakers at this point? Councillor Law?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Again, as both councillor Harryman and councillor Middlemiss, we're in a very difficult situation here. If the CFMEU can't fix the problem, it's going to be pretty difficult for council to fix the problem. But advocacy, as councillor Clancy has said, is very paramount in this situation. I think we've got to understand is that in November, when the Greens won this court case to stop logging, is that the government did step in and is basically paying the forestry workers to stay where they are at the moment. So it was, if it's going to be tied up in court for an ever-ending day, the state government had no choice, but if it's losing something million dollars a week, they've got to say, enough's enough, and they've decided to pull the plug on the forestry industry ASAP, which is absolutely devastation. My issue, and it will be, is that these forestry contractors were so critical to the bushfire management of our whole state, because they provided all the backup for all our dwelp, or decker, as we call it now. They provided all the equipment and that to help prevent our communities because of bushfire and all the rest of it. And one day, it's going to happen, but because we have lost more than half of that machinery, they'll have to pay for some of the other half to stay in those areas, but we're going to wipe out a lot of this state, and a lot of that, that little possum is going to cause the biggest grief we've ever seen in our communities, all because we've wiped out one whole industry. So I hate to say it, but this is, this decision by the government is going to be devastation in a period to come, and I'd hate to be in those communities when it does happen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? We've had opposition, so councillor Harryman, you have the opportunity to close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll start off with a couple of words. We're here to advocate for our community. When I talk job losses, councillor Middlemiss pointed out, we've lost two hundred and fifty to three hundred at the mill because of this decision. We've lost three hundred plus at Jelfa Timbers, but we've also lost a lot of contractors who work on logging trucks, who work on harvesting crews, who work in supplying fuel, who work in supplying food. I was at an event here, November, September last year, and was sitting at a table with a harvesting contractor who just in May bought eight hundred thousand dollars' worth of machinery, a brand-new harvester, because he knew that would get him through to 2030. He hadn't been able to use it since May because of court cases, and activists tying themselves or chaining themselves to his machinery, and now he won't get to use that machinery. He'd gone through his life savings and was in the position of selling his house. That's a person I want to advocate for. That's a person I want the government to know, that we as councillors, we may not be able to get them to change their decision, but we can, by God, we can stand up for the people in this community that have been kicked in the guts and left with nothing. And let's be very clear, the government's policy is to give them eight thousand dollars' worth of retraining. How do you pay for an eight hundred thousand dollar machine that you bought in good faith with eight thousand dollars' worth of retraining? We talk about the costs that Vicforests has lost. Vicforests has lost that money because they aren't able to recoup the money in court cases that they win in legal fees, and that is done at the discretion of the government, which won't let them chase the environmentalists that are taking over the coops illegally and creating workplace hazards. They're not allowed to chase them when they win the court cases. So they have to leave that money, and they lose that money. And it comes down to five words. Five words were all that needed to be changed, and it goes back to two thousand and, off the top of my head, about two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, where the words needed to be changed. It was realised that five words needed to be changed, because it's a technicality that is stopping the harvesting. It is not an attack on native animals, it is not because of the timber industry is killing lots of these animals. The leadbeater possum that we talk about was thought extinct after the nineteen forty-nine fires, simply because the fire went through unchecked and burnt out its habitat. Where it survived was actually in an area that had been harvested and logged and had been regrown, and had been regrowing for about six to seven years. That's where it survived, that's where they found it decades later, and they found it there simply because they prefer new growth. So an old-growth forest is not the best place for a leadbeater possum. I know I've gone over time, Madam Mayor, I just want to point out, if you walk through the foyer here, you're going to see local timber from the hills of Hayfield that was milled at Hayfield that was put in here, same as it was done at state parliament, same as it's Came from the back of Erika. And we're never going to see that again. And it is a sustainable industry, it is a renewable industry, and it's the only building product that you can actually use and regrow. We can't do it with concrete, we can't do it with steel, we can't do it with plastics, but we can do it with wood. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harryman. Councillors, we've had our speakers, we'll now put the motion to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Harryman? Councillor Ferguson? Those in favour, councillor Gibson, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson, councillor Law. Those against, councillor Clancy, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Middlemiss, and myself. The notice is lost. Thank you, councillors. Bring it back, and furthermore. Councillors, we're now moving on to item thirteen, items for tabling, and there are none in tonight's. Item fourteen is acknowledgements. So, councillors, you have the opportunity on acknowledgements. At times, it will be appropriate for council to acknowledge or recognise achievements of individuals or groups, or note the details. Just going to wait for a moment.
Just like to acknowledge the councillor Gibson's late. Take your acknowledgement.
So, this is the opportunity for councillors to recognise individual achievements of groups or of individuals or groups, and at the details, achievements or passing of a person who's associated with council or the community at a council meeting. I'd like to invite the councillors to raise any formal acknowledgements that need to be made regarding community matters. Councillors, I'm in your hands. Councillors, who have you got? Councillor Clancy?
I'm happy to acknowledge the Terrelegan Harriers Group, who ran the fifty-sixth Terrelegan Marathon and Running Festival. The Terrelegan Marathon is Australia's oldest road running race, and it was held yesterday. It wasn't held on, it was held on part of a road, about one point two kilometres was on Burnett's Road out in Terrelegan, and then it joined on to the Gippsland Plains Rail Trail and went out past Glengarry towards Toon Gabby. And for a very large group of runners, they made their way out to Toon Gabby and turned around and came back to forty-two K. For a very smaller group of runners, including myself, who went the one point twenty-one point one Ks out to Glengarry and back again, they are feeling very, very sore today. But, it's not about me, it's about the volunteers, and the volunteers at the Harriers Group, they were amazing. Not just, was it the starters and the people who did the dinners and the registrations and the bibs and things. At every five K mark, there were the scout groups who were giving off Gatorade and jellies and snakes and all those sort of things. And at other turnpoints, there were people with baskets with, you know, helping out and telling you which way to go, and you've run the wrong way and you've put an extra kilometre on your run and those sort of things. It was a very, very well-run and organised event. The Harriers have been doing this a long time, and they certainly ran a very successful event yesterday. So, congratulations and a very large acknowledgement to them, not only on the work that they did yesterday, but what they do for the Latrobe City Fund Run once a year, and they do on their Thursday night runs and encouraging juniors to participate in running, makes for a healthier and active Latrobe City, and we thank them for that.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? Councillor Lund?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the Gippsland Pride Initiative. They held their annual pride gala dinner on the weekend, which I attended, and a couple of councillors and GMs and the CEO attended with me. It was a delight to see the LBGTIQAPLUS community come together with their friends and families and their allies to celebrate and champion inclusion, diversity, all things shiny and happy people. There were feather bowers, there were sequins.
Councillor Lund, you just want to pause for a moment. Seems to be a number of people that don't want to stay for the remainder of the meeting. Just want to restart the clock, given the disturbance, I'll let councillor Lund commence again.
Can we start again?
No, just fine.
Oh. Just wait a minute, just wait to read.
Sorry. Yeah, it was a real joy to attend. People were able to be their unique and individual selves, and they were celebrated and embraced by their communities, their families, their allies, and their friendships around the table and the dance floor. I know that I did get up and do my dance floor shuffle and my best wiggle moves, but I was certainly outdanced by many, many other people, and it was just a champion event. But, a significant amount of work from the committee goes into pulling that together each year, so I'd like to acknowledge all of the committee members, including the chair, Caitlin Grisby, and everybody that works so hard to volunteer and bring these activities and these marvellous events together.
Thank you, councillor Lund. Councillors, any further acknowledgements? Councillor Howe, I believe you wanted to acknowledge a volunteering connections event that was held last weekend?
Sorry.
The one that was held out here?
Yes, yes. I couldn't attend, but I heard it was a fantastic event. We had over forty community groups that got involved. What it was, was a volunteers expo, so any community group that felt they needed to try and connect and get some new members, they could have a stall there and try and build their ranks. This was built on, the idea came from our Tourism and Advisory Board. With new people moving to the area and with COVID, we felt there's a lot of people that needed to get out and were wanting to get out and get connected and create new friendships and join these sort of groups. From what I understand, it was a very, very well-run event, and I know that spoke to a number of the stallholders, and they did pick up some new members. So, well done to all the community groups and to our staff who ran the event. It was a great day.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Just also wanted to, if there aren't any further, just wanted to acknowledge the Moi and District Netball Association, who hosted the Eastern Association Championships over the weekend. Special acknowledgement to all of the volunteers involved in arranging a fantastic championships there, and special acknowledgement to the Moi fifteen and under, who are now on the move to play at the state champs, and we wish them all of the best as well. Thank you, councillors, for those acknowledgements. We move on to item fifteen. This is meeting closed to the public to consider confidential items on page six forty-four. Vay Mover, please. Councillor Law, councillor Middlemiss is seconding. Take it there's no opposition. Councillors, it moves us on to the next part of the agenda. Consider that one carried unanimously. Thank you so much. That concludes the open session of tonight's council meeting. We're now closing to consider confidential business items. Thank you to all members of the community for viewing our live stream and for those who participated in attendance this evening. To those who are now making their way out, the exits are there for you to make your way safely out into the car parking area. Thank you so much, everyone. We'll close off now and then hold over. Thanks to those on live stream. Good night.